We now call the meeting to order because please pay attention to Councilwoman Ortiz for the invocation and to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand at your aim.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us bow. I heavily follow that we just come to you thanking you for another opportunity to gather. On behalf of the city, we thank for all you've bestowed and all that you're going to bestow. We ask that everybody that's represented here today, whether it's the city or state, we ask that you just touch them in a mighty way. Well, we ask that you go with the Herrera's as they've lost a pillar in this community in District 2. We ask that you be with their family and love your loving arms around them. She was the owner of La Siesta and we are saddened by Connie's death. But let us know that she's with us in spirit and, Lord, we just thank you. We thank you for all the kids that had the opportunity to go to school today and those that will be going tomorrow. And, Lord, we just thank you for all your blessings in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now proceed to presentations. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Our first presentation is the financial report for the quarter.
Good evening, Governing Body. Tonight we will present the second quarter report for 2018 as is our tradition of bringing you kind of a summary of the financial report that was provided to you all. As always, the full quarterly report is posted on our website and was provided to you all in your mailboxes. So if you haven't had access to that, then it's accessible in either of those ways and of course has been posted for the public to view as well. So tonight, just giving you a pretty brief update on our finances. As was stated in the last quarter, the first two quarters of the year are really watching to make sure that we're generally on track. The third quarter financial report, which we'll bring to you around November, will actually do projections for the end of the year. Of course, we are doing projections internally right now, but we will walk you all through that in November and also look towards any kind of year-end adjustments or budget amendments that might be needed. So tonight is pretty brief. That's good news. If we needed to take longer to talk through anything, then we definitely would. So in this case, just kind of hitting on the highlights, but overall is a good news story year-to-date. So just an overall summary of the revenues. Total revenues, all funds combined, is up 4.14% through June. General fund revenue up 1.2%. That is a pretty modest growth. Of course, growth is good. And in the budget, as you know, as you'll approve tonight for next year's budget, we have a pretty modest growth pattern built into the overall general fund, so this is right on target. Property tax is up right at 1%. General fund sales tax increased slightly at .76%. Luckily with the distribution we've received in July, we already know that that's ticking up. But as you've known for really a couple of years, sales tax has been a pretty flat growth for the city and of course that's kind of a larger issue going on in the economy due to sales tax revenues. Water fees are up 8.3%, so this is of course up over last year year-to-date, so part of that is due to the rate increase that went into effect, but part of that is of course also due to just to the fact of the dry weather and the increased water that's being used. And really that's the same story on the wastewater side, partially due to the rate increases and partially just due to usage. Franchise fees are up 5%, which is to be expected again based on the anticipated high bills that people have been paying for the hot weather, so that is something that we expected to see. Stormwater fee up 5.2%, which is really right out the amount of the rate increase. And special highway, that's really the one revenue that we're projecting flat. This is of course the pass-through that we get on motor fuel funds. And as we've been seeing for a couple of years, just due to the way that people are using cars and the general economy of the cars, this is a revenue that we are seeing as flat growth and we've projected about that same in the 2019 budget. Overall expenditures, total expenses are up 2%, which is good of course compared to the 4.14% revenue growth. General fund expenses are up 3%. Much of that in the non-personnel areas is due to timing. I talked to the mayor earlier about, you know, commodities looking really high compared to this time last year. In a lot of areas like commodities and contractuals, it's really due to timing and if you have one large payment or one large purchase, one month different, then it can really skew those numbers. So the majority of that expense growth is on the personnel area, which of course we did budget for and anticipate for. Water expenses are up 5%. Stormwater expenses are virtually exactly flat with last year's numbers. And then wastewater expenses are up 5% as well, tracking right with the water. And just an overview of a couple other pieces of information. As you know, if you go to the finance page, you can find a link to the financial reports and view the whole report. Also a reminder that we do update our open government portal. Specifically, our performance portal, we update on a quarterly basis. So if you go to the website, then you will be able to see some of the second quarter performance numbers. And the other portals are updated on a monthly basis. In the checkbook case, budget would be an annual update. In the project case, it's actually a daily upload that we update that website. So just kind of a reminder of all the many pieces of information that we have out there for you and the public at any given time. So that concludes our brief financial report.
Do we have any questions, Badi or Nikki, with regards to the Councilwoman Hiller?
Just one short one. I did not bring, you do a nice job with sending us a summary along with the report. And I didn't bring it with me. Do I recall correctly however that you reported that as of the end of the second quarter, our bonded indebtedness was creeping up just a little?
It is, I'll have to, the overall, it is in the quarterly report. We have a picture of our overall debt. And for example, at this moment in time, it's at 4.8 million and that is over last year at this point.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions for Nikki with regards to this report? Nikki, thank you so much for the great work. The next item on the agenda is another report. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, as Bill Feinder will run through our planning quarterly report.
And this begins the Bill Show for today.
Yeah. I'm paying rent while I'm up here. I've been up here so long. Good evening, Governing Body. Yes, tonight is our second quarter development and growth management report. This is a year-to-date. This is not just the second quarter, but our year-to-date totals for a lot of the development activity. We will also project what our year-end totals will be. So when I go through this and show you that, a lot of it will be projections to what the year-end total should be to kind of show you how we match up from last year, last few years. Okay, Nikki stole all of my green arrows. I have some green arrows to show you. I don't, they're not all green, but I'll start out with green. 2018 permits are on pace to be just a slight uptick from last year. Overall permits, residential and commercial growth together, a little bit more than last year, 3%, and a little bit more than our five-year average. So that is trending in that direction. We're projecting towards the end of the year. When you look at residential, so residential, this shows the number of units that we project to have in the city created this year, new units, 168 by the end of the year. That would be a 52% increase over last year's total and a 22% increase over the five-year average. We are seeing a couple larger housing unit developments, so that is causing that. We probably, hopefully, will see some more also in the next couple quarters as well. We definitely have some coming your way. So that's a good sign, good news there. On the, oh, sticking with residential. So when we look at our location where these are occurring, it's always something we want to pay attention to in terms of how our growth management policies are, how effective they are. And 2018, we're at a 59, almost 60% share of all new units are within the city at this moment. That is what looks to be about a seven-year high, so we hope to stay on that pace. It's certainly an increase over the last year and the last five years. So another good news where we're directing more of that type of growth within the city. Keeping on residential growth real quickly, this just shows the additions and alterations for residential projects. Again, this is way up, so we're seeing a lot more additions to, for residential, 27% since last year. At least that's what we're projecting. That's what we're on pace to be by the end of the year. So that's an interesting, that's a lot more rehabilitation, a lot more staying in place, adding on, improving where the building is. So good sign there. All right, here come my red arrows. Commercial project, commercial permits are projected to be at 176 permits by the end of the year. That is, that would be, if that stays on that pace, that'd be about an 18% decrease from last year and about 5% decrease over the last five years. I've noted this before, you'll see this in here, we just were on, we were on some historical highs the last couple of years in terms of commercial activity, commercial permits. So that is not totally to be unexpected, so we'll keep tracking that. As we, as, actually, I'll just point one thing out, just realized. So the blue line in this graph is residential. Those are the residential permits. The red line is the commercial permits. As you can see, the red and the blue line never touch, except for last year. That, that's how high the number of commercial permits we were at. We were at an all-time high in comparison to our residential permits. So now that's trending back to kind of where it used to be with that gap between the two. Okay. Again, this is the scale, this is the size of the type of commercial permits we're seeing. Again, project, and this stands to reason, we're not seeing as much square footage. We would project about a 67% drop in overall square footage, so much smaller projects, not as much square footage. Likewise, the value is also probably going to be at a five-year low if it continues on this pace. We're about projecting an $89 million commercial permit value by the end of the year. That would be a 41% drop from last year, not as bad for the five-year average, 33% drop. So that, again, if you can, the important thing here is in terms of commercial, we are seeing a lot of commercial activity over the last several years, so it's, it is somewhat expected that we would have this sort of drop-off, but we need to keep tracking this and make sure it is, it is, we know why. Getting back to residential, actually, this is, this is a new graph for you to show. There's, we track how many new lots are created in the city versus our three-mile area since we, that's how we have jurisdiction for the three-mile area and new subdivisions. What this kind of shows you, the blue line, the blue bar is the city, the red or the pink bar would be in the three-mile area. So a lot of lots being created in the early 2000s, mid-2000s, recession hits, drops off substantially, but over the last three, we're really looking at the last three years or four years or so, there's, actually, there's negative lots being created in the three-mile area. There was a couple subdivisions that were vacated, that were, had been approved in the past. That's why there's negative lots. And likewise, we have had a few more net new lots created in the city. So this is sort of what we are expecting and would want to see as we move forward, more growth, more lot creation in comparison, in the city in comparison to the three-mile We also look at that so we can measure what our inventory of lots are and how much, how many years of growth we have when it comes to single and two-family development. We coined a term called buildable prime vacant lots. What that is, is those are lots platted since 1970 that have streets or that have a benefit district and that are vacant. So these are lots, in theory, that would be shovel-ready to be built on. So we have 10 years' worth of lots, of the lot, vacant lot inventory right now in the city, 914 overall lots. And we expect that, would expect that to go down. It tends to go down. Obviously, we're not creating a lot of new lots, as you saw in the first graph that preceded this. So those lots will get absorbed over time. Yes. So those will get absorbed over time and that number will come down hopefully under 10 years, under nine years, and slowly you can see at some point you do need to look at opening up new growth areas for single and two-family developments. So that's why we keep track of that. Okay, and there is, there are building permits for residential. These are probably the three most active areas. You have the area, I'll just say in general, the Lawrence Bay area, that's several subdivisions out there. You have Aquarian Acres out southeast. We see a lot, a lot more permitting going on there and actually we'll probably see a new benefit district coming before you soon on that. Miller's Glen, Miller's Reserve, Sherwood Park area, that is also where most of the activity on the residential side is happening. Okay, back to the, back to the commercial or back to, now we're going to get into sort of what were the bigger projects in the last, or the first half of this year. The, and we measure that by the value. So the number-one value-wise was our Kansas Avenue loft projects, Mike Wilson's project at First and Kansas. This is kind of the before, they started working on it. You'll see many openings there. Now they've, all the windows are exposed, they've exposed some of the brick, they're actually finishing up the skin of that. And it looks better actually when I went by today than that picture. So this is, it's really neat to see the progress on that. I know even driving by on the highway, driving by on the viaduct at night, the light glows from those windows. Like, I've never seen that before. It's really cool to see. So that is on, that is on progress for 33 new lofts there?
Councilwoman Hiller?
Could I interrupt? I was going to ask anyway, back to those original residential numbers, and some were new residential and some were...
Additions?
Additions and renovations.
Yeah.
Which bucket is this one in? How does this one get counted? And ones like Van Buren School or the Casson Building that weren't residential before...
Right. Great question, Councilwoman Hiller. So if the unit did not exist before, that's counted in with the new units.
Okay.
So here, there were no units, so these are all brand-new units. The Cass and the Van Buren School, all those will be new units because there wasn't any residential unit there before. If, if there's a residential unit there now and it's just being rehabbed, then that gets put into the rehab numbers and it's not a new unit number.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Good question. Okay, second on the list is Highland Park Central Elementary Storm Shelter and some various improvements there. That's still under construction. That's $3.2 million project overall. East to Pika Learning Center, many of you know about this obviously, that is coming along. That's a $3.1 million project and is on, is on, is on schedule. The world's largest McDonald's is at 21st and Bell. I'm not, this is a 75,000 square foot, that's what my numbers are saying. I've never heard of that. But anyway, that's great. Big play land. Big play land. But that is taking, that is going fast. That is, that is going up real fast. That should be open by September at this pace. And then lastly, our fifth highest was Grace Med, which I believe there's a ribbon-cutting tomorrow. That's, that's, that's great news. That's the old Dillons at Huntington Lane, looking, looking really nice and can't wait to see that open. So those are, those are just some highlights of the top five, of the top 10. The only other one I would say, you know, might be worth mentioning is we, of course, we've, Iron Rail Brewery downtown has pulled permits, so that's coming along. That was the ninth highest value rated this year. So with that, that's all I really have to present. I remind everybody, if you want to see these reports, they're out there at topeka.org planning and just, or just Google DGM reports and it'll take you to all of these. So, thank you.
Bill, thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Bill, you talked about Lawrence Bay applying for some permits for housing or...
Yeah, if I can just, want to go back to the map there.
Because that's been kind of empty for a while.
It's, and the, I forgot to mention, that's, I don't want to mislead anybody. So the vacant lots that are out there now that are with the benefit district and all that, those are not what I'm talking about. These would be the Lawrence Bay Estates, there's the original Lawrence Bay. Those are some of the lots that are still left to be filled up. But the vacant lots that are out there now that you're, I think, referring to, nothing's happening there still.
I mean, because we had conversation about somebody going in buying them at a, Lord, we've never done anything. We've just had conversation. Is that correct?
Correct. I'm, I'm not aware of where the ownership is at this point, but I know there's just hasn't been anybody approaching us about doing anything there.
I'd like to, if you could find that out for me, I'd like to know what's going on with that. So I get a clear understanding because when I, when I think about Lawrence Bay, that's what I think about, that, that we're just at a standstill. So what you're saying now is people are applying for the old Lawrence Bay or...
Yeah, these, these are the existing Lawrence Bay, the original Lawrence Bay subdivision.
Okay.
There's a Lawrence Bay Estates phase that is also being developed by Daltmeyer. That's not, that's, that's part of some of those blue dots there. So just want to distinguish the part, the vacant lots that we're talking about or you're talking about are not activa, are not being developed. But other, but other, other phases around there are.
Yeah, are. Okay. And then the middle one, Aquarian Acres, what's going on with that?
Aquarian Acres, seeing a lot of, again, new single-family or some duplexes as well. There's, it's, there's kind of a hole in the middle there where there's, it's platted and I know they're going to come in and start building some new streets here soon for more lots. So you're just seeing more single-family and a couple two, two-family duplexes coming in. So that's, that's remaining somewhat active.
Just slowly, because I'm seeing houses go up on 29th kind of slowly.
Mm-hmm.
And what about Sherwood? What's going on there?
Sherwood Park, you have a couple remaining, not many vacant lots there that have, that are being built on, but it's more the Miller's Reserve area that where the St. Jude's House was, is, there's, there's, there's several new homes popping up there that we're seeing. So it's more the Miller's Reserve.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you. Related to that then, I'm trying to reconcile 15 lots going active to about 30 on here. This is building permits for new construction pulled and active?
Mm-hmm.
Your, I thought your slide said there were about, the activity was at the level of 15 this year.
15, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm checking.
I don't know, I'm not...
You had the number of how many buildable lots there were, you, you had a little term for them, and then you had it reduced by 15 last year and 15 this year.
Oh, right here, yes.
And I'm trying to reconcile that with all those dots.
Yes. So, right, so we have 30 overall here in the first quarter, so 30 building permits, 15 in the first quarter, 15 in the second quarter.
Okay.
That have come in. And what we just showed you with those dots would be some of those 30, I guess, that have come in. Some of these are not all brand-new units either, which is the other thing, these blue dots are not distinguishing what's new, what's, what's a rehab, but most of them are new.
My mistake, because I, some of your other charts have been years and so I didn't, I didn't see it as quarters.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm good.
Councilman Emerson?
Mayor? Mr. Feinder, there are some large commercial projects just getting ready, correct? The Frito-Lay expansion, there's something else as well. And I guess, are you projecting, what are you projecting for the rest of this year or for, for next year?
Councilman Emerson, the projections I'm giving you tonight are really just straight-line projections based on what's happened in the first half of this year. So assuming we stay on the same pace, at the same level, that's what we would get. You know, typically, we don't, we see, we do see more activity in the first half of the year, just because people want to get their projects in the drought and get done before the snow comes. But we will see some stuff coming to at least start groundbreaking in the fall before winter. So you'll get a little uptick. I, I don't know that I, I don't have a good feel for the size and the number that are coming, but I know we are, we are very active, have been active in the last two months doing a lot of pre-application meetings. So hopefully those follow through and come to fruition.
Great. Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none, thank you so much, Bill.
Sure.
We now proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Daley Slaugh?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear.
Chair.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
Besant.
Mays?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lester?
Here.
We now proceed to the consent agenda.
A, our minutes of the regular meeting of August 7, 2018, and there are no applications.
Council, you've heard the consent. Thank you very much. Councilmember Lester, do we have a second? Councilmember Mays, we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. If there's no additional comments, we proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed with the action items. Action A, if the clerk agrees.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, authorizing and providing for the issuance of $46,695,000 aggregate principal amount of combined utility revenue bonds, Series 2018A of the City of Topeka, Kansas, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Jeff White from Columbia Capital will come and make a presentation regarding our revenue bonds.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Jeff White with Columbia Capital. I know that, I'm sure you woke up with anxious anticipation this morning, knowing I was going to be back talking about bonds. So last week, we talked about general obligation bonds and notes. Tonight, we're talking about revenue bonds and in advance of a really good report on the sale today. I wanted to talk a little bit about what the distinctions are between those two security types and a little bit about the city's revenue bond debt portfolio. So last week, you will remember, I mentioned that when you issue general obligation bonds, you're giving a promise to the bondholders that you will raise taxes as high as you need to for as long as you have to in order to get them repaid. This is a distinctly different source of security. So in this particular case, we collect user fees from users of the water utility, the wastewater utility and the stormwater utility. We put those into a bucket, we pay the expenses of those utilities, and then the net revenues are the sole source of security for the bondholders. So the bondholders only have the ability to look at the revenues that are left after we collect the user fees, pay the expenses of the utilities, that's what's left. If there's not enough money there, they have no claim on the general credit of the city. They can't come back and say, raise my taxes or give me money out of their general fund balance. They only get access to, to that net revenue. And as a result, bondholders and credit rating agencies look at the evaluation of the credit quality of a revenue bond structure differently. So in this particular case, rather than looking... case, rather than looking at things like economy, which is about 40% of your grade and a, and a rating for general obligation bonds, they're looking at, what does your user base look like? How frequently and willingly does the governing body increase utility rates when it has to? What are your long-term capital plans? How much additional debt are you going to issue against this, this pot of, of net revenues that's available? So, I'm pleased to report that, again, congratulations to you and staff, very effective management of your utility over time. The, the city's combined utility has the fourth highest rating available. You remember last week, I mentioned the, the general obligation bond ratings were the third highest available, fourth highest available for utilities, which puts it a little higher than the median water wastewater system around the U.S., which is probably in the fifth or sixth highest rating category. As a result, your borrowing costs are very competitive, and, and I'm, I'm taking Nikki's thunder a little bit, but we saw eight bids on our competitive utility revenue bond sale today, which is a great imprimatur from the market about how strong this, this credit is. So, when we think fundamentally about bondholders only being able to access that, that net revenues, they're very interested in how much more debt are you going to issue? And if you're going to issue more debt, are you going to give me more revenues that I can rely upon in order to, to pay those off? And so, if you flip to page three in that handy memo from, that's in your pocket from last week, hopefully it's in there again this week, you'll see the, the picture that's worth a thousand words of the outstanding debt. And I'll give you, give you a second to, to get there. A few of you are flipping. Looks like, it looks, it looks like, no, it looks like this without my, without my handwriting.
This one from, from last week?
Last week?
Mm-hmm.
I'll paint a mental picture for you. If you remember, if you remember last week, we had what I call downward sloping debt service, meaning that the, the maximum amount of debt service due at any time over the life of the outstanding bonds was next year. The combined utility debt service looks very similar, except at the very beginning, it's a little flatter. And what that means is it's harder for us to issue new debt in a way that doesn't immediately put pressure on your rate base. And some of that is, is just due to the capital-intensive nature of these utilities. Some of it is due to the city's historical way in the past, going back to 2006, borrowing from a program called the State Revolving Loan Fund Program, which are state loans issued that kind of replace revenue bonds. And the reason that those are problematic is those SRF loans are done over 20 years on a level basis. And your revenue bonds, we've historically done over 30 years. And when you add a bunch of 20-year debt on top of a 30-year pattern, you end up getting a bunched amount of debt service. And we'll have that for the next five years or so before the slope really drops off quite a bit. So, the challenges for us with the combined utility, if you, if you read the rating report, and, and I would imagine staff sent that along, but if they didn't, we can certainly pass that along, generally very positive reactions to how the utility's managed, what's going on. They're concerned about how much debt is in the, in the capital plan coming up, which is a lot. And they also want to make sure that the, the council will come back and renew multi-year rate increases as it's done in the past. I think one of the key strengths of this utility over the last 20 years is that the governing body has been willing to approve rate increases on more than a year-by-year basis. So, when we show up at a rating agency presentation, we say the council's approved rate increases for the next three years. That makes that conversation very easy. The other thing that makes things very easy is we don't have a state utility board to, to seek approvals through. The governing body itself sets the rates for, for the utility, which is, which is very important. I also, I noted this last, last time I wrote the memo in July, I predicted that we wouldn't have any negative impact from the debt we were issuing today on our rating, and that turned out to be the case. And the, the same kind of pattern that Nikki mentioned, where the rating agencies are looking not only at the debt we're issuing today, but the debt we plan to issue over time, is factored into that rating as well. And so, they know, they know what we expect to have coming and coming years. But the, I would say the, the combined utility from a rating credit quality standpoint is more fragile than the GO at this point, just because of the amount of capital pressures that you have in those utilities. And you all saw that when you went through the, the capital improvement program. There's a lot of needs there. And unfortunately, your, your rate payers are, are going to continue to be looking at rates increasing in order to pay for those, those capital expenses. So, with that, Madam Mayor, happy to address any questions.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Do we have any questions for Jeff? Mr. White? Mr. White, it seems like you were adept in your explanation, and everybody is marveled and, and full understanding.
Well, also, I know Nikki's going to overview the, the transaction today, but congratulations, it was a great one. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, similar to last week, now we'll kind of bring you to today and, and give you an update on how the bond sale went. Tonight, you just have the two agenda items. First is the ordinance, and second is the resolution. And of course, those are both for the same amount of money and the same series, just kind of lining out different technicalities that go along with those bonds. Again, Columbia Capital, Jeff White and Kalen Dwyer are here, along with Gilmore and Bell, Kevin Cowan. So, thanks again to them for all the prep that they do, building up to this night. We did have a competitive sale this morning, and we received bids, which in front of you, you should have a competitive bid summary sheet with your packet for this agenda item. And as you can see, we received eight bids. Last year, we received six, and eight is the most I've seen in a long time, so that's very good news for the city. The winning bid, as you can see on the top there, was JP Morgan at 3.635. Last year, that rate was 3.2085 was the winning bid. And similar too with the GO bonds, that's, you know, trends in the, in general rates within the economy that really account for that increased rate. So, with that, those are the only updates that I have, in addition to what, what Jeff stated before. And again, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Nikki? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Nikki. All right, Bonnie, we have the presentation, and we have an ordinance in front of us. Deputy Mayor?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Jensen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cohen. Do we have questions or comments at this point? Councilmember Heller?
Thank you. I've really struggled about whether to say anything or what, but I just, I feel like I need to share that, you know, first, I really like Jeff, and I, I appreciate the, the presentations, too. But I, I am troubled with a presentation that makes it look like we have, that, that our, our indebtedness is going down and everything will be just fine, and cheerful language that says, so we've got room to borrow more, when we know, as Nikki mentioned, that our indebtedness is already going up. And, and we know that there is a lot of pressure on the utilities. And I personally think that it, you know, I asked some of the questions I did last week to see if the staff would jump in and say, yeah, well, the reality is, of course, if we borrow the same amount of money at higher levels, this is going to trend up. And the same thing's going to happen in utilities, and we have known that we needed to do more than we have done in the past somehow. And so, that was really going to trend up. And so, I just, I will vote yes on these today, but it may be the last time. If we can't really demonstrate that we've done everything we can to get dollars out of this bond queue, to, to, because a cheerful comment in here that says, and fortunately, and Jeff set it a little lower key tonight, the city has 100% authority to raise rates all they need to, from the bond council and bond investor point of view is fine. But from our point of view, it's still how much money do people have, and, and how much can we pay? So, I really want us to, to be spending as much time as we can to minimize, whether it's the temp noting, whether it's the, the project lengths, so that we minimize and, and work on efficiencies. So, as much as possible, every one of these pennies is squeezed, and, and, and we're borrowing as little as possible so that we can take care of our, our people and our utilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional comments? Questions? Seeing none. We proceed with the voting. 10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to Action B. If the clerk would read.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, prescribing the form and details, and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of $46,695,000 aggregate principal amount of combined utility revenue bonds, Series 2018A, of the City of Topeka, Kansas, previously authorized by the ordinance of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
City Manager.
Nothing further.
Councilwoman Clear.
On my packet, it says $46,710. Is it 695?
There was a new addition, new paperwork today. It was booked for total amounts.
Mr. White, the new number.
Go ahead.
This one. Thank you.
Additional questions? Deputy Mayor?
We're just going to move to approve.
We have a motion for approval for Deputy Mayor Jensen. Do we have a second? Second by Councilwoman Clear. Any questions? Deputy Mayor?
One comment. I, I know that we're borrowing a lot of money now, but I think it's critical to remember that we're in this situation because councils in the past have not done the maintenance that they were supposed to do over decades. And we're in a race to catch up now so that our children, and our children's children, don't have an infinitely larger problem to deal with. So, I, I realize that we're biting off an awful lot, but as long as we're doing it as efficiently as possible and as inexpensively as possible, the whole goal here is to not burden our future children with a crisis of infrastructure, especially one that we're facing now. So, while it's a big number, and I do agree with Councilwoman Hiller, and that we need to make sure we're doing absolutely everything we can, the reason we're doing this in such huge swaths now is so that future generations are not faced with the crisis that we have inherited ourselves. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions?
So, so the new numbers are in the ordinance?
Uh, you received the, an additional, an addition to your packet.
Understood. Okay.
All right. We proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to Item C. If the clerk would read.
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, by providing for an amendment of the planned unit development master plan for the College Hill redevelopment subdivision, to allow for the construction and operation of a dog park and pet exercise area as an interim use with the underlying PUD land use of eight attached residential townhomes to remain in place for future construction on vacant property located at 1423 Southwest Lane Street.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Bill Feinder, Planning Director, will review the facts concerning this particular case.
Mr. Feinder.
Thank you again. Okay, so, with regards to this item, probably leading up to this meeting, you've received some communication from City Attorney's Office, kind of outlining the factors that go into our zoning decision-making, your, your decision-making for zoning matters. And so, what I thought we could do is just touch on those for this particular case, and kind of to, to help maybe shed some light and illustrate what goes in, what, what are the guidelines, and how do we come up with our, with the land use factors that we use for zoning case? So, I think that, that might be a, a good place to go, and I'll walk you through those, and hopefully we won't get too, too deep in the zoning weeds. But I think for this matter, and, and all matter, and all zoning, zoning cases that come after this, I think would be illustrative. So, when we say land use factors, what I'm going to use is the term golden factors. This is coined after the Golden versus City of Overland Park Supreme Court case that really decided kind of the, the baseline for how cities decide zoning cases. And it really sets the stage for what is legally relevant in, in our considerations, in the staff, in the planning commission, and in the governing body consideration for zoning. So, there's eight of them. Bear with me. There's eight of them. First one is character of the neighborhood. In this particular case, the, the College Hill Dog Park case, again, the neighborhood is high-density residential, is transitioning into a low-density residential area. You've got an adjacent commercial retail business. You've got a busy street. You have an arterial street. These are sort of the things that make up the character of the neighborhood. So, intensity is not an issue here. So, you want to see more intense things in that sort of setting. A dog park, or park in general, would not, would be, would certainly not be considered intensive. But there are some potentially negative traits that come out that we do have to mitigate potentially. So, that's why, those are the things we look for. So, while this fits the character, what are those traits? Could they be safety? Could it be visual? Could it be noise? Whatever. And we address those in conditions that we present to the planning commission and ultimately to you. And that's what we did here. The fence, for instance, the fence was something that we, how it looks, that, the fact that they have a fence that's pulled back from the business. Those sort of things go into what we're recommending. All right, second, second factor, golden factor, is the zoning and uses of nearby property. That's relevant here, is because this particular use is permitted in the surrounding zoning of this area. Residential and multiple-family zoning, this is actually, this, a, a dog park is considered an accessory use to residential, to a residential project, in this case, those, the apartments. So, what is normally a permitted use is before you, it's normally a permitted use administratively. It's before you because this is part of a PUD. And the PUD is very specific, tailored to specifically what you can and can't do, as opposed to the general zoning district that is allowed by right. So, because it's not articulated on the PUD, it's a major change in the character of that PUD. That is why it has come back before you for approval. Number three, the suitability of the property for which it was zoned, for what it is zoned for. Again, we're not, what is being recommended is not changing the underlying zoning. The underlying zoning, or the suitability of that zoning, is still multiple-family. Actually, very specifically here, it's a PUD that allows eight townhomes on this particular lot. So, that is still suitable, and that is not going away. And that's still the preference. The preference is to have the multiple-family development here, which is why we ultimately landed on a time limit for the interim use. Fourth factor is the extent to which removal of the restrictions would affect, detrimentally affect nearby properties. We kind of covered that in the first factor. What are some of the mitigation, what are some of the negative traits that could be mitigated? So, we kind of covered that in the first factor. The fifth factor is the length of time the property's remained vacant under the current zoning. So, it's, it's been since 2006 that this has more or less been vacant, zoned for multiple-family development. The, again, the reason that's a factor is if you have a vacant lot, and the surrounding development and that vacant lot are zoned the same, and that's surrounding development has already happened, then it's reasonable to expect that at some point, that use is going to, that development's going to happen on that, that lot. So, you don't look at changing the zoning necessarily and say, that's not the best zoning for that. So, that's, we're not, we're not going to take the multiple-family zoning away. That's not what we want. That is the preference here. So, in this case, it has stayed vacant for a while. We do think the, when the market is ripe. And if we can have a compatible interim use, that puts that vacant lot into use for the benefit of the area, then that would be great. And we could have two wins there. Okay, the sixth factor, I'm not going to read it. It's really long and confusing. So, let me just say, what it, what it measures is the public gain by keeping the status quo, which is a vacant lot, versus the hardship of the property owner if they are deprived of, of the use that they are asking for. So, it's really, that's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a hard comparison to make. It's not probably fair to ask, to have to really make that comparisons, or- comparisons or anybody. It's a, it is a judgment call, but you, those are factors. So for instance, in this case, a vacant lot, that's, that would be the status quo. Not a lot of public gain, as you know, what vacant lots represent. On the other hand, you have some hardship placed on a property owner who might be deprived of an amenity that could go back into an economic return for their property, leasing up a successful property, enjoyment of the residence, circles back into the tax base for the city. So you have that sort of hardship on, on the property owner, and we don't think the gain to the public would be any higher than that hardship. So the gain to the public would be remaining status quo or a vacant lot. All right, that's six. Seven, we're almost there. Conformance to the comprehensive plan. That's pretty simple. That's, that's an easy one to understand. What does our comprehensive plan say? What is the proposal? Comprehensive plan, in this case, is the neighborhood plan for Central Park, which recommends medium-density residential on this property. That's good. That's exactly what we want. Problem is, that's not necessarily the particular use that's being proposed here. So that is, that's kind of what led us to, so it would be more conforming, I guess, if you will, to not just the comprehensive plan, but really the PUD, which, which allows the eight townhouses to get there. Let's have a time limit. Let's have an interim use. Let's make sure it's compatible and place the time limit on there so that, so that we can ultimately leverage the use we want to see there down the road. And then lastly, just the recommendation of staff, that's pretty simple. Again, we are recommending approval, and then we list the conditions that I just kind of went over to help mitigate any concerns. So, and that's, that's just professional judgment. There's other factors that come up, and so, that are not part of the golden factors. The, probably the main one that comes up a lot is public comment. Public comment, we absolutely, we seek it out. We have, we have neighborhood meetings. We have the public hearings. We want to know what the neighbors think. We want to know what the public thinks. And so we do that. But that doesn't mean, and public, public comment is not one of the golden factors. It's not a golden, it's not, oh, there was ten people here, so we have to weigh it as if there was a lot of, all that input weighs on, on our, on our decision. That input is only relevant as much as it's tied back to those golden factors. So generals, generalizing, sweeping commentary generally doesn't, won't feed into a specific thing as to why, why you would support or not support this from the public side. So, so public comment is not a factor, but we weigh it if relevant as it comes along, and we should. And in this case, I guess, compared, go back to the case, we did receive comments from the business adjacent to this. One of the reactions to that was to try and accommodate pulling that fence back and not having it so close to the patio. So that is one way we listen and, and try to mitigate. Some other, some other factors that we don't, are really not germane legally to, to this decision, how the property was acquired, who is the developer, who is the, who is the public commenter, how many people commented, how loudly they commented, you know, whether we like the landowner. It, none of that matters, not in, not in the zoning case. And so that is, that is something that we kind of, we, we walk down this land use path very narrowly based on those golden factors. Development, it's been brought up, the development agreement. Development agreements really is, again, a parallel thing going on over here. We have a zoning land use path going on over here. If at some point the city attorney tells us, hey, you know, because of this thing over here, you shouldn't proceed on this thing over here, then we, then that, then that's relevant, and that matters. But until that would be the case, and that wasn't the case, the agreement was not binding. So that, so we proceeded on the zoning process on its own accord, with its own limits, and, and that just continued. The last thing that's been brought up was the TIF district. Again, that's a separate thing over here. It's not a land use factor that goes into the decision-making. It happens to expire in three years. There's been some changes of, in the development over the past ten years that has helped pay off more of those bonds, but really, that's not a land use decision. Again, how much does a dog park generate? That's, again, not a land use decision or golden factor. So we don't consider that, and that's not something in your position legally would be considered. So I guess in conclusion, when we rezone something, we really have it, have a, we try to balance the interest of three major stakeholders. The landowner, the neighbors around that landowner, and then the community at large. So those three are never given too much weight over the other. You try and balance out. That's kind of the art of this all, if there is an art. And hopefully you've recognized that balance somewhere and landed on some, some recommendations that are reasonable and, and conform and are consistent with those golden factors. And then just lastly, no matter what happens, whether zoning is approved or not, the zoning does not, it's an entitlement. It doesn't give you, it gives you the right to do something. It doesn't require you or mandate you to do something. So whatever happens, just, just understand, the zoning is just simply allowing something to proceed. It may never proceed. It may, it may never, ever happen, but it is, but it is, zoning doesn't make something happen. It just is, is an entitlement. So with that, I'll try, I'll, I'll stop. I think I've gone enough in the weeds, even for my liking. If you, if you have any questions about that, though, I'll try and help.
Thank you very much, Mr. Feinder. Do we have any additional comments or questions, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I have a couple of comments. I'll start by reminding everyone that this is not actually in the College Hill neighborhood. The College Hill neighborhood's east boundary is Washburn. It's part of the College Hill development, but it's actually in Ms. Hiller's district, and I believe it's Central Park. So, that said, I was delighted to learn that this property was not taken by eminent domain, just for the record. With that, my brief comments are, the, my understanding is the apartment complex is full, and with a waiting list with Washburn there, so there, this isn't really needed to, as a selling point for the neighbor, the apartment complex, they're already full. So it doesn't benefit the surrounding neighborhoods because it's for the private use of the apartment complex only, so there's no benefit to any of the surrounding communities. You know, this is not what we promised. And I say we, as in the city council, our predecessor. This is not what we promised those neighborhoods, and with that, I can't support that. I would amend that by saying, if there was a way to get a definite timeline that, that if a dog park is built, it would be torn down, and the plans we promised would happen within three years, I could then support the temporary use, but given that there is no guarantee that that will happen, I'm afraid I can't support going back on a promise that my office at least, the chair I sit in, made to the, to the surrounding community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clear.
So it's my understanding, though, that you guys did the hard work. I mean, you, I mean, from reading this, you guys asked all the questions that we asked. You vetted it out. You did the hard work. It's just for us to say, yep, you can zone it this way.
And, and I'll, I'll add an additional thing, Councilmember. I think that we have to remember that at this point in time, we are here in a quasi-judicial mode, and whatever vote we make should not be made out of any extemporaneous conversation that has happened here. We are solely to look at the information that has been given to us in the record.
Right.
And if at any point in time, any information that we receive should impact our ability to make this vote, then that's how the vote then gets disclosed, and you can abstain. But at this point in time, and this is one of those very tricky, technical things, it's not so much of what we know as regards to the information that has been presented to us by planning. So...
So correct?
Yes.
Right? So, I mean, reading the minutes, you asked a lot of the same things we did. You vetted it out, and you just want, yep. Did it zone or not zone?
It's, it's largely a big analysis that gets filtered down to a very, yeah, clear recommendation to you. And whether that's reasonable or not, I think that's, that's for something for you to decide.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller?
I just want to thank you for all that work. I, and I appreciate the questions that were raised as well. It, this one is a mind-bender. I think that having legal help us understand that, and planning that you separate whatever kind of legal and financial development agreements were from the zoning, and the fact that the zoning itself, which is in that record and the Planning Commission reviewed, the zoning itself did anticipate that the, the development of multifamily, and that issue was discussed with the developer, and he was agreeable to looking at that and agreeing to a, a short-term use. As Bill said, that's about as close as you can get in terms of a planning and zoning allowance unless somebody else has picked up some information. I do represent that district. Central Park NIA did consider it and didn't have a concern. So I'm prepared to move to approve whenever that time is right.
Okay. Councilwoman Lester?
The only, the only other thing I would point out is, is if you just look at this from ten thousand feet and from a business perspective, it really becomes immaterial to a certain extent to me, whether or not as far as from a timeframe that the development is going to take place. From a business perspective, the, the developer's not making any money right now.
Right.
You know, he's not making any money with a, with a dog park. He's not making any money with a vacant lot. So, so the purpose of, the question with that is, until he does that, it's not a cash-producing entity anyway. So it really, to me, becomes immaterial. At the very least, our cat, tax value does go up with a, with a bark park, you know, because we got fencing on there. We got other things on there. So getting hung up on the fact of when and if he's going to really becomes immaterial. Thank you.
So I will read the statement that I read before all of these matters, and will go around the, the room, that states that prior to proceeding with the vote, each member of the governing body who has engaged in any ex parte communication with any individual, either in favor or against the matter being considered, must state that this communication has occurred and indicate that even in light of having this communication, you are able to fairly, objectively, and impartially consider the measure based upon the evidence provided on the record. This record includes the Planning Commission minutes, the staff report and its attachments, the public comments made during the Planning Commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. This declaration is required due to the fact that the governing body is acting in a quasi-judicial role in making this decision, and must demonstrate the appropriate process has been afforded. So we will start with Councilwoman Hiller.
I can't remember all that. But yes, of course, as with the others, I've been contacted, have done the best I could do as well with due diligence. I don't think there's anything that has come, has been brought to my attention that would affect the work of the Planning Commission and my judgment.
Councilwoman Clear?
What Ms. Hiller said.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
What did she say?
Yes and no.
I spoke to proponents and opponents, and that doesn't cloud my vote.
I, I heard from proponents and opponents, and it does not affect my ability to make a decision impartially. Councilwoman Elmerson?
I got several emails from an opponent of this, notwithstanding that, and based on Mr. Feiner's recitation of the golden factors, I feel like I can render an impartial decision.
Thank you. Councilwoman Padilla?
I've received no communications that would impair my judgment in making this decision.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I would echo the comments of my colleagues who have received communications regarding this.
Councilman Mays?
I've also received communications on this, but I feel like I can make an impartial decision.
Councilwoman Cole?
I have also received communications and can still render an impartial decision.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Lester?
I too received communications, but feel I can render a impartial decision. Thank you.
That being the case, everybody has made their declarations, is able to make an impartial decision at this moment in time. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Councilmember Lester. We have a second by Councilwoman Hiller. If there's no further discussion, we proceed with the voting.
All right, we have eight yes. Councilmembers Padilla and Jensen voting no.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move forward to item D. If the clerk would read.
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by section eighteen fifty zero fifty of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at four twelve Southwest Jackson Street from I one Light Industrial District to D one Downtown District.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Feinder will review this particular item regarding the change in zoning request.
Thank you. This is the first of, of a few coming, zoning requests coming before you. The, this one is a request by Kathleen and John Belt to go from I one Light Industrial to D one Downtown Mixed Use at four twelve Southwest Jackson. The purpose of their request is to accommodate two new loft apartments in a, in an industrial building that actually dates back to nineteen ten. This, this block here was an industrial block, one of the few remaining industrial box, blocks in our downtown mixed-use area. Our comprehensive plan for the areas does show a larger mixed-use concentration downtown, not as much industrial. This is one of those that, and that's, so that's what's happening here. This is transitioning into that resident, when I say mixed use, it means, just think residential along with commercial uses in the same building. So this is what this is transitioning to. We did hear from a neighbor, actually, just, I guess it'd be to the right there on the screen, who owns industrial zone property, is a landlord for some industrial tenants, and they were just concerned that new residents in the area would start complaining and be concerned about the noises that come from these tenants. The owners at the Planning Commission spoke to that. They're very well aware of what they're getting into. They actually, they want, they're seeking out that sort of character, that sort of atmosphere. So, so Planning Commission staff recommend approval. If approved, the, the use of the property could still be used for commercial on the ground floor. I think that is part of what their, their plan is, but for now, their immediate plan is two apartment units.
All right. Do we have any additional questions for Mr. Feinder on this matter? That looks pretty cool, by the way. Okay. Well, before we go there, I will remind you of the statement that was just provided with regards to your impartiality. And we'll just go, I, I will announce that Councilmember Ortiz sends her regrets. She has a family situation that she's taking care of, and everything's okay. I asked if everything's okay, but she did have to leave. So that being said, Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. No ex parte.
No ex parte?
No communication.
No ex parte communication on my, aside from the documents that were provided to us by the Planning Commission.
No ex parte communications. No ex parte.
Nothing of what's been provided, nothing?
None for me.
No ex parte communication other than the Planning Commission.
No ex parte for me.
Now, with there being no ex parte communication and the ability of every single person in the body being able to make an impartial decision on this matter, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Hiller, a second by Councilmember Padilla? Are there additional questions? Seeing none, we proceed with the voting. Seeing none, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed to the item E of the agenda, if the clerk would read.
E is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, approving a major amendment to the planned unit development, PUD master plan for Kansas... Kansas Education and Science Park to allow the additional use of a multiple-family residential on Lot 1, Block C, and further described as Area A, all contained on property located at 3001 Southwest Kansas Drive.
Also known as Episode III of the Feiner Show. City Manager?
Yes, Director Feiner is back for the next set.
No commercials. This is a proposal by Calmar Development Group. Calmar is a large, multiple-family developer. They have a... They're based in Niagara Falls, in the Niagara Falls, New York area. They do have complexes in the Midwest, in Omaha, Des Moines, Kansas City, and hopefully here. This is as far west as they go. The type of portfolio they have is more of a retirement senior-type housing, 55 and over, little, very nice amenities, garages, but this is a very nice, higher-end type of complex that they're proposing. The location is the former State Hospital grounds. It's actually the property where the old State Hospital Tower building was, and so it's on that nice little vista going down what is now Tuffy Kellogg Drive. One of the conditions that we're recommending, that they do something special, have some focal point, much like the tower was, whether it's the building architecturally or something on the site, so that they are very agreeable. They really like the area, and they love it because of the park-like setting. It is finally kind of a... Our overall comprehensive plan proposes mixed-use for this area. The only thing that's not here in that mixed-use recipe is residential. We've got recreation, we've got offices, we've got retail, we've got schools. There's everything there. This finally provides a 24/7 setting, 132 units. This is quite significant. So the only issues that we came up with, other than saving as many trees and the landscape as possible, was... Oh, the unique... Yeah, the focal point. They even agreed to add a bus stop for the residents. This is on a bus line, transit line. They've added a couple infill sidewalk off-site so we can have full pedestrian and transit access for residents there. So it's been very accommodating. In fact, they're going to have to change the design of their typical prototype just to save a lot of the... I knew I had a picture of it. A lot of the trees that are on-site still, and that was very important to us, and nice to tell you, it was very important to them. That was their whole plan. So, and not the least of which, this will go back on the tax rules. This is a property that was in USD 501's hands, so this will go back on the tax rules and hope to see this soon in the permit stage. With that, Plan Commission staff both recommended approval. Stand for any questions.
Any general comments? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Just a quick one. So are they going to take down the existing buildings, then?
There are... Councilmember Jensen, there are no further buildings to take down?
So the two that I see, or three I see on the map, are going to save, then?
The building is going to be on the southern half of the aerial there, so there are no buildings... They are not taking down any buildings.
Does their plan include use of those buildings, then, the existing ones?
It does not. No, that's for a future... That is not property they are acquiring.
Well, there's a red building in the upper-right corner of the red box, or am I looking at the wrong thing?
That is not part of what they acquired.
Oh.
Yep. It's just the southern half of that red area.
Ah, okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was the entire red area.
It's not.
Okay.
That whole red area is one single parcel now. It's been since broken up by their acquisition.
Ah, okay. So this is an old map. Okay. All right. I'm sorry. I'm with you now. My hope was that's... I think that up... I drive out there all the time. The... That's a pretty old building. I'm hoping someone will capture it and do something with it, which is... That's my concern for it, but... Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
So at this point in time, if there's no additional questions, I will remind you that we are again in a quasi-judicial manner and that we are to go to the rule call to ensure that you are able to make an impartial vote, starting with Councilwoman Heller.
No ex parte.
No ex parte.
No ex parte other than the information presented to us by the Planning Commission and its staff.
No ex parte? No ex parte.
None for me.
Nope.
No ex parte.
No ex parte.
Now that the council members have indicated that they have received no information and are able to produce an impartial vote, do we have a... We have a motion by Councilwoman Heller?
Once again, District 1.
I know. You are going to help us meet our thousand-resident goal.
Man. Who knew, I have to say? This is so exciting, and I think as a complement and balance to this Kansa development, I think all of us worried a little bit when 501 took that step and bought that campus, but they developed a wonderful idea and as a balance for what's already there and what could come with the three remaining buildings and so on. I just... I think it's wonderful, so I would with a great deal of pleasure move to approve.
Deputy Mayor made a second. There's no additional comments. We'll proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We proceed to item F, if the clerk would read.
F is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at the southwest intersection of Southwest Kirklon Road and Southwest 42nd Street from I-1 Light Industrial District to PUD Planned Unit Development District, I-1 Use Group.
City Manager?
Yes, we'll have Director Feiner continue his review.
Chapter four.
All right, we're getting there. This is a two-parter. The first part is a rezoning. They're both for the Frito-Lay expansion down at 42nd and Kirklon. What is being proposed is an expansion for warehouse or storage up to about over 200,000 square feet eventually in all their phases. The particular first phase is actually what is called ASRS. That's the Automated Storage Retrieval System. I didn't think I'd get that. So AS... But it's all over the staff report, so if you see ASRS, it's a vertical storage system. So it's a... And that's why this is before you, because it is so vertical, it needs a variance. It's 125 feet tall in height. Our limit is 70. So that's why it's been put into a PUD so we can walk it through the zoning considerations and grant the variance or consider the variance. In this case, and just by the way, to give you some idea what 125 feet is, the Ramada Inn is 120 feet, the Jayhawk Tower is 120 feet. So it's about that. It's about five feet over those two buildings. Grain silos are about 110 feet, so it's about 15 feet over that. So it's... And it probably resembles a grain silo more than anything. It's a vertical storage unit. So this will help ultimately free up space within the existing Frito-Lay facility for future growth. Right now, they're transporting a lot of this stuff back and forth to warehouses on Topeka Boulevard, so they'll have more storage capabilities on-site and free space up for future manufacturing growth within the current buildings that are there now. So that's a good thing. Now, from a land use standpoint, some of the considerations, as you can see on this aerial, there's a blue blob on there. We put that on there just to kind of give you a sense. That's a floodplain, 100-year floodplain, and some stream buffer. They're fairly restricted in their building envelope if they want to expand, so that's... So going vertical as opposed to horizontal is a good thing here. We are... We did recommend that they reroute the Kirklon. Kirklon, right now, is just going to be... They're going to cross over Kirklon, so the next item, the plat will vacate part of Kirklon, and I'll show you the rerouting of that street. So that's part of this. And I'm trying to think what... Oh, let's get to the... Yeah. So the height. We support the variance. We recommend that you support the variance. As you can see, this gives a little... It's hard to see that, but there is a section that's being added on to at the top there where the arrow's pointing. When you get down on the ground, it's really... There it is, in red. But when you get down on the sightlines, just to see what it looks like 120 feet in the air, that would be the most visible that you would see it from. That is the turnpike going south, and you don't blink. It doesn't last long, but as you're... Depending on how fast you're going, it's a fairly quick look. All the other vantage points that you see this from are either screen by... Do I have the... Yeah, are screen by buildings. This is from Topeka Boulevard. You can't even... You can't see it from Topeka Boulevard. If you're coming up north on the turnpike, it's set low, trees are screening it as well. So the impact is very minimal for that size of a building. There's no adjacent landowners to really impact either, so we are definitely recommending approval of the PUD, and I'll stop there in case there's any questions.
Questions? Deputy Mayor?
Just quickly, this doesn't look like it's near high enough, but this won't have anything to do with Forbes or any expansion of the air traffic out there, will it?
Good question, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, that is not in that space, I guess, if you... Best way to put it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, clear.
Why is our limit 70?
Councilwoman, clear. So that is a newly enacted limit as of about four years ago. There used to be no limit, so there was some sense of, well, there probably should be some limit because I-1 districts are not always just around a bunch of other I-1 districts. They can be new neighborhoods, they can be other less intensive uses, commercial uses as well. So that number was... That's what was settled off. The variance to do... And that's something we can... We could probably do some more conditions of, okay, 70 is the max, but maybe if these other conditions are met, you could go beyond that. That's something we can take a look at. As we reflect back, that is probably a little lower than it should be, but still, it wouldn't be 120, I can tell you that, so...
Thank you.
If there is no additional questions, I will remind the body that yet again, we are in a quasi-judicial capacity here and that we are to just do the rule call to ensure that the language that I read earlier still is the language that we're basing our votes under and that we're able to make an impartial vote. Councilwoman Heller?
No ex parte?
None.
None for me, aside from the documentation provided by staff.
No ex parte, but I would like to thank PepsiCo for their continued investment here in Topeka, even though I will be impartial with this vote. I did have an opportunity to visit with some staff there and looked at their operations and gave some consideration to what could be expanded, and I'm very pleased to see that Frito-Lay is making that commitment to our community. I can make an impartial judgment on that.
All of the above.
No ex parte.
No ex parte.
No ex parte.
Thank you very much. Now, the council members stating that there is no... They are able to make an impartial vote regardless of the information that they have received, we have a motion by Councilmember Padilla, a second by the Deputy Mayor. Are there any questions for Mr. Feiner? Seeing none, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. I believe we have some friends from Frito-Lay here in the back. Thank you for your commitment to our community and for your continued expansion and interest in the city of Topeka. We appreciate you and we're very proud to have you in our community. We now proceed with item G, if the clerk would read.
G is a final plat for the Frito-Lay subdivision number three on property line between Southwest 42nd Street and Southwest 49th Street, approximately halfway between Southwest Topeka Boulevard and US 75 Highway, with the northwest corner line adjacent with the Kansas Turnpike, all being within the city of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
City Manager?
Mayor, this is the last item regarding rezoning for Mr. Feiner. Let him finish out.
You'll be happy to know there's no ex parte on this.
Yes.
Yes.
This is a plat. This is a major plat. You don't get to see much of these anymore because we do most of our plats administratively. The reason you're seeing this is there's a dedication of a new road and a vacation of a road, so that's one of the reasons that it would come before you. Okay, so I explained a lot of the project in terms of the plat. It's just a two-lot plat. The major things that are being accomplished by accepting this plat would be, one, is you would be agreeing to the future rerouting of what, in essence, is 42nd Street. The green line here on the map, on the aerial that is up, indicates the future alignment of a new road that connects 42nd all the way down to 49th Street. 49th Street is where Wanger stops right now, dead ends, so this would be renamed. This is a future Wanger extension, if you will. Now, this plat doesn't dedicate all of the right-of-way for that extension, but just the ones that touch on the Frito-Lay property, they're in red. But that is... That gives you some sense of why... This opens up land that is not currently accessible. That's why the road is being proposed for a future development. So it will... So the plat does that. It vacates a good portion of Kirklon as well, so that reverts back to Frito-Lay, so we lose half a street in the process. We pick up a number of easements, not the least of which are, you see a lot of floodplain and drainage easements along the way, and stormwater easements. We also pick up a note or an agreement by the owner that in the future, when that road does come along and is required for new development, that they would agree to be part of the benefit district as part of that. So normally, when somebody is developing and there's a road there along their property, they're made to put it in. In this case, that's not necessary. Just a very small portion is probably going to end up getting put in there in green. So when the rest of the lot develops, or further south when that develops and it's needed, they would agree to be part of that benefit district. So that's worth noting and very good. So with that, I'll... This is recommended for approval. I'll stand for any questions.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So the Westview part at the bottom would be moved, then?
Yes, Deputy Mayor. It's hard... The straight portion of the green line there, the future road, that is currently already right-of-way for Westview Road, and so this is just taking that right-of-way, but when you get down to the south end of that, we wanted to get it back across to connect with Wanger.
Sure.
And so a new develop... A new business doesn't have to cross the creek again, which is very expensive, so it actually opens up that into a couple decent developable lots when you do that.
So how much of this road is built, then, or is not at all?
None of it. None of what you see in green is built. We're just dedicating the right-of-way for a good part of it here.
Are we obligated, or is the plat to be built in the foreseeable future?
It'll be triggered when development is... Comes along.
Okay.
That'll be one of the conditions of building there is to put in the road, for instance.
Ah, okay. Excellent. I love planning for the future.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Emerson, to the... North of 49th to the west of that green line is owned by Go Topeka, Growth Management.
Okay. Thank you.
See, no additional questions. Do we have a motion or... Deputy Mayor? We have a motion by Deputy Mayor. We have a second by Councilman Fadilla. If there's no additional questions of Mr. Feinder, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item H. If the clerk would read.
H is approval of the City of Topeka 2019 Consolidated Annual Action Plan.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We heard a presentation last week by Neighborhood Relations Director Sasha Han regarding the Consolidated Action Plan. If there are questions, we can... She is here and can answer them. Otherwise, we seek approval tonight.
Are there any questions from the body? Deputy Mayor?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Deputy Mayor Jensen. We have a second by Councilman Mace. See, no questions being asked of staff. At this point, we proceed with the voting.
Sorry. Start the... Okay. We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes.
Yes. Is there any question?
I did that last week, too. We now proceed with item I, appropriation ordinance. If the clerk would read.
I is an appropriation ordinance introduced by City Manager for a trap approving and adopting the operating budget for calendar year 2019 and appropriating the amounts for the purpose set forth herein.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd ask Budget and Performance Director Nick Hawkins to please come forward and make some final comments regarding the budget.
Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight marks the culmination of a six-month process began in early February when we talked about budget priorities with you as the council. Those were passed with a few minor additions in April. We've had several informal public comment sessions, both online and in person, to get input on the 2019 budget. In addition to that, we've had two budget workshop meetings in June, as well as two discussions at council meetings in June and July, including on July 3rd, when you adopted two amendments to the budget totaling $55,000 for... $50,000 for the Topeka Performing Arts Center, bringing their total of $150,000 and $5,000 to youth employment, bringing that total to $30,000. The total budget is about $309,500,000. That's remained unchanged since you passed the setting of the maximum taxes levied on July 10th. We had the public hearing last week, of which we had four speakers come up and give their input on the budget. Tonight would be passing of the budget ordinance, which would then allow us to submit the state forms as well as the ordinance to Shawnee County, fulfilling the state requirement on the 2019 budget. So with all that, I'll stand for any questions, if there are any, if...
Doesn't seem like there's any questions, but we do have a person signed up for public comment, Mr. Steve Schipholbahn.
Thank you for this opportunity. A statement, a problem statement. First of all, I guess I'm Steve Schipholbahn. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board of Directors for the Topeka Justice Unity Ministry Project. So problem statement. Topeka has 22,574 renters. Almost half of our residents choose to rent for various reasons. Forty-three percent of those renters, 9,757, cannot afford their rental apartment. 10,596 rentals are reported to be in substandard condition. These statistics, which we cited and emailed to each of you, are reported in your 2016-20 Consolidated Action Plan to the federal government. Nonprofits who serve this population agree there is a problem that needs to be addressed. The City Manager agrees there is a problem that needs to be addressed. We've disseminated widespread support from residents, taxpayers, who agree there is a problem that needs to be addressed. These numbers speak for themselves. Stories. You have heard the story upon story from Jump about how this problem has affected many people's lives in a very personal and significant way. Some value statements. Hard-working people should be able to afford housing and still have enough money for groceries and other basic necessities. Children deserve an opportunity to succeed in school and life, which is tied to having a stable home. A place to call home offers seniors an opportunity to live and grow with independence and dignity. Communities that offer more affordable housing options are stronger economically. Young professionals need access to quality and affordable housing so they can choose to live and work in Topeka. What's our current mechanism for addressing affordable housing? Our current mechanism the city has for addressing affordable housing is the Consolidated Action Plan. It has a $6.2 million budget and $1.9 million comes from the city budget. In 2019, this plan only proposes the construction of one new unit. If you add nonprofit partners to what this plan proposes, they may construct up to 10 new units altogether in one year. This is a painfully slow rate to produce affordable housing. The plan proposes rehabilitation for 104 owner-occupied units, but only 28 for renters. With 10,596 homes in substandard condition, 28 is not even a drop in the bucket. This plan does not address affordability for renters nor the quality of place for renters. So what's the gap in the housing stock? We do not suggest the city force landlords to upgrade their property, condemn it, take away their ability to rent it out so long as it is in violation of code. What that will do is spark an exodus of families who need a home. We need to provide alternatives, transitional housing, and more safe and affordable rental housing options. Page 49 of the Consolidated Action Plan says, "In general, more rental housing appears to be the need for low-to-moderate income households," unquote. I request permission for additional minutes, three, four minutes, to finish my prepared remarks.
Do we have a motion?
I'll try to read fast.
Give him four and he can be done.
So we have a motion for additional four minutes. We have a second by Councilman Emerson. We proceed with the voting.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes.
So the solution. In order to address this problem, we propose that you do something different, which will lead to different results. The city needs to go above and beyond what is being done with the federal HUD money in the Consolidated Action Plan. Jump proposed you set aside one or $2 million a year and draft RSPs as outlined in the City Manager's draft Housing Trust Fund Ordinance, so that developers will create projects that include rental units for families at or below 80% of the area median income. Your seed money is the incentive developers need, much like you provide incentives for commercial development. That's what housing trust funds do. They attract development and they target the type of development that we need here locally from one year to the next. Investing in the trust fund is a good business model and a proven solution. You can leverage $1 into six in order to construct and rehab rental property in the city. So in conclusion, we speak the minds of the people who feel disillusioned. That surfaces tension whether any of us want it or not. That goes to show that we are speaking to a real need. Decide to take up that need, not because you're crazy about Jump, but because it's the right thing to do. People in this community value home over streets and entertainment. People in this community have gotten behind this idea of investing in the trust fund. At our 2018 Nehemiah Action Assembly, a diverse group of 900 people supported a trust fund. But what matters is whether you can get behind it. Be bold. It takes one council member to start a real conversation on the governing body. Propose an additional local allocation to the Housing Trust Fund in the 2019 city budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, Deputy Mayor Jensen.
Just briefly, I know we're running out of time. So you mentioned that there were a number of units that had been reported to somebody that were substandard. Who is this somebody that these issues keep getting reported to, and why is it not code enforcement?
We get our information from visiting with people in our congregations, people we know. And that's what we base our priorities on.
Okay.
This has been a priority for a couple of years.
But I understand, but in all of the documentation... Or I'm sorry, the information you presented, you said, and in your email, you've stated that there... You've got reports that there are numbers of housing units that are substandard, and I don't disagree that there probably are, but who are these being reported to and why are they not being reported to code enforcement so that those units can be addressed?
The information we get is to document the city's figures that they've acquired through whatever sources the city has acquired.
So those have been reported to us and code enforcement is not getting it resolved? Is that... I don't understand why we have all of these homes that are substandard, but yet there's no... We don't have any code enforcement action to solve that. And correct me if I'm wrong on this, but you know, part of the role of government is if somebody is not... If a home is not meeting the minimum standards our community has set, it's the obligation of the property owner to correct that. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
Deputy Mayor, and I'll interject. I know City Manager wants to make a statement on this, but when you're in poverty...
Yes.
And you are in a home that you can afford, a lot of times you will not report that landlord because as soon as you report, the landlord will be thrown out of your house.
And I don't disagree.
And the landlord will go ahead and as long as the unit is not considered or deemed, which is the struggle that we're having at the state level of stating that the property is not deemed unfit and unstable for the community, there really isn't anything that can happen. And what ends up happening is that you have that landlord take advantage of yet another individual in the community and they move individuals out. A lot of times what ends up happening in this arena is that you have a landlord that comes in, and when the landlord receives the complaint, they fix that complaint, but then they raise the rent of that tenant.
Sure.
To the point that those tenants are pushed out. It's a very complicated issue. It is not that the city of Topeka is not aware and trying to work through code with these properties, but at the same time, we have to be very cautious that as we're doing these things, we are not moving the individuals that are already either poorly housed but still housed, because then what ends up happening is that you end up making people homeless.
And I don't disagree that it's a complex problem. My frustration is that you guys come to us time after time and say you're doing nothing, but yet if these issues are that large, why can the city and Jump not partner to get some of these homes fixed? I mean, it is the obligation of the landlord to do that, not the city's. And that's my... I'm just not understanding. Granted, I don't have a whole lot of experience, you know, especially at the level of you do.
And I will add that the city is doing something. I mean, one of the reasons that I left Habitat for Humanity was because one of the models that I started working with the city with was the fact that we were going to start doing rental housing. Even at Habitat, we were doing rental housing and we created a little contract that the landlord would not move the individuals out or raise the rent if we fixed the apartments. But the reality was that the funding that we're receiving is not sufficient, and a lot of the funding that we're receiving at the federal level is being used to fund programs like Cornerstone and our Shelter Plus Care Program, which is spectacular in this community, and other things. So there's only so much money that we have to continue dealing with the big challenges that we have right now.
And I understand that. So the city has to bribe landlords to fix these homes or they'll throw the residents out?
It's not about bribing the landlords, sir.
So why won't the landlords fix the property?
City Manager.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, the issues that I look at, there are two categories here for us related to the housing concerns. If it's on the outside of the home or it can be seen by an individual, they can report it.
Sure.
And then our inspectors can go and look. Also, our inspectors, when they're doing proactive reviews of neighborhoods, looking at things, they can see it and they can write it up.
Sure.
So if it's an issue related to their rental house that's on the outside, we'll catch it, either through that, those two reporting processes. If it's internal, it's much harder for us, given the laws in Kansas.
Agreed.
The resident can report it, and if they invite us in, we can go in and we can look at the issues and move forward with corrective action orders. But if they're not invited in, then we can't pursue those. And so what I have a feeling is a lot of these situations that are not... That are being documented are internal issues as they're reported to them.
Agreed.
And makes it harder. It's been noted to me that we do have a retaliatory eviction policy that would prevent someone from evicting a person if they report, but you know, it's not very often. There's still a concern about that possibility. We can enact that. We can use that clause to help protect them best we can, but it's also a difficult situation for that individual that's reporting.
Sure, and I'm not discounting that it's... You know, if you're trapped in that situation as a tenant, you know, I could understand that seemingly an impossible situation for them. My question has still not been answered. If the landlord has the wherewithal to fix a property, why are you all advocating for the city to pay for that? That's what I'm not understanding. My other comment is you all continue to advocate for millions of dollars to be poured into this trust fund. And I don't disagree that the trust fund is a good thing, but that millions of dollars has to come at the expense of another service or we have to raise taxes. And cutting another service is also going to disproportionately affect...
Yes, Councilman.
Point one. The topic we're on here right now is the Topeka Operating Budget.
Yes.
Okay? I think we've gotten way off that topic.
Well, this gentleman is advocating that we reallocate money in the operating budget, and that's my point, is that if we do that, we're going to disproportionately affect other services and other people. I don't know that that's actually going to solve the problem.
Deputy Mayor? Yes, Councilman Lister.
My point is, let's get back on the topic. You know, that's another reason why I think that it's also sometimes important that we have... We follow our rules in regards to our speaking, our time. The topic is the operating budget, and now somehow we've gotten all the way off here on affordable housing, on Jump, on all this stuff. So let's get back on what the topic is, and I'd like to call a question.
Well, with respect, my comments were about the budget, and that was the point I was making, is if we reallocate money, we're going to take it away from somebody else, and it will disproportionately affect the people that are served by those services that would be cut, or we have to raise taxes, which disproportionately affects the working force. So with that...
Thank you for your comments.
I will move to approve the budget as written.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
So we have the motion that has been presented to us. There is no motion on the floor right now.
I just made one.
You made the motion. So we have a motion. Do we have a second to approve the budget? We have a second. So at this point in time, are there additional questions or comments with regards to this line item? Councilwoman Hiller.
Briefly. Thank you, Mayor. As I've said before, I wanted to say again that I really... I so appreciate the budget proposals as they came forward this year and the process that we've had. I think City Manager and staff listened upfront to the guidance from the council and the public and that it really, really worked well. Notwithstanding that, a lot of us did spend some time really doing deep dives into that budget. We've had conversations in our meetings as well as with City Manager. And again, not for further discussion tonight, but I just wanted to remind everybody, given the financial report that we've had and just natural inflation, we probably, in simple terms, truthfully, need to figure out how to get a million dollars out of the budget that we have now in terms of looking to the future for next year. We don't need to do it tonight, but over the course of the year, we don't have to spend everything that we've budgeted. spend everything that we've budgeted. So staying with City Manager or staff, you know, if we need to talk about certain topics, we can do that too. But I think we need to keep that in mind from this moment on, so that we're, we're ahead of what's going to happen next year. And third, I think we need to watch our strategic investments. We've talked a little bit about our property tax values and sales tax not going up as much as we'd like anyway. And to, so as we, as we progress through the year, to keep an eye on those things that we are spending money on, with the idea that they're strategic investments and will generate economic prosperity for our community, which often you see in taxes. They were all good ideas when we started, but if it's time to readdress some of those and reconsider, that's what we're here for, and to work with staff on that. So with the approval of this budget, I think I would just encourage all of us to keep our eyes open and keep working now. We don't end up talking, maybe sometime we could actually set topics like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund idea, or certain departments and so on, so that this once a year when we talk about the budget, isn't the only time we talk about programming and costs and savings. So I just wanted to put those few things out, and again, thank the staff, and I certainly will vote to support.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Emerson.
Deputy Counsel, sure. Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering if Mr. Trout could comment on a couple of things. You gave me a great explanation of the extra positions that you proposed in this budget, as well as you did have a response on the jump, what you intend to do, so that, so that people don't think we're just simply docking these questions. I was wondering if you could just briefly.
On which part? Excuse me.
Both of those. The positions, and then what you intend to do as far as bringing back to us an affordable house.
Oh, correct, yes. In the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we need, I need to take those document, the document and the input they received prior, at the time that it was initially proposed in the discussion item, and redraft it, and bring it back for consideration. So that's still on my to-do list in the, in the future. Reference the positions, we looked very closely at what positions we were creating. We looked at ones that would be, a couple of them were taking positions and splitting them. So the cost was covered by the initial position, even though it creates an additional position. The zoo position was covered by money that was being paid for by the friends of the zoo. And then also, as we looked at the needs that we had in order to improve progress with regards to approval of plans, the fire plans reviewer was an item. And that's probably the one, as I look at it, that's really the one position that we added that wasn't covered by existing other types of funds, et cetera.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank you, City Manager, and your staff for working so diligently to bring this information to us as council members and go through it step by step. For me, this is, this is the first opportunity I've had to sit through that. It does seem daunting at first, but with the professional approach that you and your staff took, I think it made it more understandable, and I feel more comfortable about it. I am encouraged that you will continue to bring things to us, like the affordable housing proposal. And so I just wanted to say thank you to you and your staff for that.
All right. At this point in time, seeing no further comments, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed with announcements, if the clerk would read.
The August 21st agenda includes, and on the consent agenda, we have a resolution from Crest Dicking for a noise exception. We have an expenditure ordinance for June 30th through August 4th. The action items include a resolution for providing notice of a scheduled change for governing body meetings in October and November. And then we will have the final reports, one from the special committee on the traffic and pedestrian safety ordinance, and the other will be from the Public Health and Safety Committee on the proposed camping ordinance.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. I saw you pause. I saw you pause.
I did pause. And then we will have a considerate amendment for the downtown plaza development agreement.
Okay. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I don't really have any other announcements other than to provide a thank you, obviously, to my finance department, Nikki Lee, Nick Hawkins, Ted Clemmons, Deputy Manager Gerber, and the other department directors, almost all of them, but I appreciate all their efforts. It is a very large budget. It is a challenge. It is work that we take very seriously. We know that we're using tax dollars of the citizens of this city, and we want to make sure that we're using them wisely. And so I appreciate all of their efforts in order to come up with this budget, and also your patience as we work through the various questions and issues that we had, and look forward to next year.
Thank you, City Manager. To add to that statement, I was, I was really processing in my head some of the remarks that were made tonight, and I want to make sure that the, the public understands one thing. The fact that our, our financial advisor did notify us that we, this is how we do our bonds, and that we do have the ability to raise our taxes because we are issuing these bonds, does not mean that as a staff, the staff does not look at what the needs of our community are, and what the thresholds of our community are, before those things are executed. So I want to make sure that everybody that's out there understands that what Jeff White was doing really, was explaining to us what that tool was, and the fact that this is how that tool is paid. And that when you look at our community, we are in a really great debt-to-income ratio, so if anything were to happen, we still look like we can issue those tools, because they are secure methods for the person that is actually going ahead and lending us the money. So I just didn't want for everybody that's out there to understand and to think that the staff is not taking all of these things into consideration, because I don't think that as a staff, anybody is dead happy or interested in raising your taxes. One of the things that we have demonstrated year after year is that we have a really slow rate of moving the tax base here in the city of Topeka. And even so, to the point that we are struggling right now with our utilities, because we have not raised those utility rates, because we have been very cautious on doing that. So a lot of respect to the staff that does this, because I know that it's very hard for us to make that decision, and in the end, it is still your council that has to vote on that decision. And I think that you have a council that is very protective of our tax base. So that's one. The second thing that I wanted to say was, I know that sometimes we get into discussions, but it's important for us to hear our constituency. And, and I appreciate the conversations that are happening. I appreciate the questions that you were asking today. And, and I think that I have a perspective very different than most people. Number one, I think that City Manager, Councilwoman Padilla, and I were at the Nehemiah meeting, where we had over 1,000 people advocating fervently for, for support for what's happening. The stories that we heard were very synonymous to the stories that I understood. When you work in a Habitat for Humanity, for example, and you know that you can only build 14 houses a year, and it's because you're adding like 10 rehabs in that process, and it's because there is no money. There is just no money. There is no more money. And you walk into these houses, and I will never forget, there was a house on Fremont that I was rebuilding the roof, and there's pictures of me on that roof on Facebook, but I don't know if you could see that I was being covered in roaches as I was building that roof. And there were eight kids in that house, and that house was 800 square feet. And this was a family of a woman that was working, a single mom that was working with her kids, but when you're making $7.50 an hour, it is really hard for you to have affordable housing. Now, I understand that we could figure out ways of dealing with the issues, but my friends, poverty is real, and it's not sexy to talk about it, but poverty is real, and poverty is in our community. And there's families in our city that are working very hard, but they just can't make ends meet. As a CEO of Habitat for Humanity, I was only making $50,000 a year with no health insurance. Single mom of three kids. It's hard. It's hard. And we have to start tackling and having these conversations, and I appreciate the work that you have done, and I appreciate the work, sometimes the methodology I don't agree with, but the work in the heart of what is trying to be accomplished here is something that eventually we're going to have to talk about. So now, to happy things. First of all, thank you to Tiva for hosting me today. I had a great conversation with the individuals of the Topeka Independent Business Area, the Business Association. While for National Night Out, I hit six neighborhoods. And I tell you what, my feet felt it, my back feels it, but my heart feels it as well, because it was very exciting to talk to all the neighborhoods. The people at Quentin Heights have it going on. They had a band. They have a band that lives in their neighborhood, and they were playing blues the whole time that you were over there, plus eating their food. They, I know I'm taking a while. Also, we had, Oakland has shirts that say "Straight Out of Oakland." So there's like this little thing happening that the NIA's are taking a lot of pride in their neighborhoods, and they have t-shirts to represent their, their area. And that's beautiful, because that means that Topequians are taking pride of their neighborhoods, and that's where we want to go with this. I want to say thank you to fire and police. There was no stop that I made in a neighborhood that they were not there. Those trucks were moving, they were playing with the kiddos. I have one of the funniest pictures that has ever been taken of me with the chief of fire. If you look at Twitter, you'll find it. He was making an awesome face. And to the kids that are going back to school, welcome back to school. To Lorena and Christina, go to sleep early, because tomorrow you have to wake up at 6:00. And finally, and definitely not least, I have some really great news I shared with the City Manager. As part of all of the things that we have been doing, and all the travels that I've been making outside of the city of Topeka, we are receiving yet another great benefit. The city, the Mayor's Institute on Design has selected the city of Topeka to be the recipient of some expert counseling and support. And what they're looking for is for a project that we're doing, a development project that we're doing, that is not completely underway, like downtown, but that it's in process, that we're talking about it, and we're dreaming about it. And I have chosen the riverfront. I spoke with City Manager, and what they'll do is that they'll send somebody to Topeka, they will meet with all the stakeholders, and after they meet with the stakeholders, take a look at the area. I will go back with this huge plan, and they will give us expert advisors at the national, the top national individuals that do real estate development, planning, all of the things that we would need in order for us to move that project forward, and they're going to help us with a roadmap on how to move forward for free, again. So that is wonderful, and I just thank the Mayor's Institute on Design and the U.S. Conference of Mayors, because it has been like the jackpot for the city of Topeka, to be present and to be involved. It's a lot of work when I travel, but it's proving to be worth it. Councilwoman Ortiz is not here, so Councilwoman Emerson.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to say National Night Out was a great thing in District Four. I went to six or seven different sites, and they're well-attended, and it was just a great time. It was great to see neighbors getting out and meeting, meeting other neighbors. We also have, coming up this Saturday, speaking of that, they have the Back to School Bash at Ebenezer Baptist Church, which is at 2535 Southeast Ohio. It starts at 10:00 and gets over at 4:00, and there'll be food, fun, and school supplies, so should be a great time. Lastly, I got a chance to talk to Bob Sample this week, and you guys may have heard, there was a, there was a waterline break out of 49th and Topeka Boulevard, I guess. Just wanted, you know, I don't think we often know how hard staff goes about not inconveniencing either citizens or businesses, but in this case, I know from talking to him, they got together with several businesses, as well as Mars, which was affected by that. And they made temporary repairs, and then they did it at night on early Monday morning. So that was great. I really appreciate all that work, and thanks.
Councilman Padilla.
Thank you. I just want to echo the, the good times I had during National Night Out. I cheated a little bit. I got on the bus so I could get around town and go a few other distances, and it was kind of impressive. I was standing there talking with Jim Mogul, and he was wondering, as we were going over the Kansas, Topeka Boulevard Bridge, he said, "It looks like there's an accident. There's cars pulling off to the side." And I said, "No, there's a marked vehicle, that volunteer police vehicle running along inside us, and a car flashing lights in front of us," and it was like a motorcade, and all the, all the cars were honoring that, and were pulling off to the side of the road as we went down the road like an emergency vehicle. But we all got a real good chance to visit with everybody, and so it was a good night, and I was able to make it to, over there on 30th and McVicker as well. But I liked also, not only just all our local law enforcement, Topeka Police in Shawnee County, but the Highway Patrol involved themselves as well, and they were at some of those other locations. So again, thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So I will echo your comments on housing. It's a complex issue. It's one that desperately needs to be solved in this community. It's one that requires the partnership of everyone. The government is solely not the solution to this. It requires the government, the private sector, the nonprofit sector. All of us have to come together and work together to solve that. And with that, I am both terrified and excited to publicly announce that my wife, Amber and I are expecting our first child. Pending no construction delays, thank you. Pending no construction delays, we will deliver this project at the end of January or the beginning of February 2019. The council is committed to help grow this community, and by God, we're doing our part. Normally, I would have an epic monologue prepared for such occasion, but given the hour, I'll report just a few basic features of this late model Jensen. This is our Mark II unit. We are 17 weeks into construction. While we do not know what she is building, we generally assume it will be a human child. We expect the feature set of this to include 10 toes, 10 fingers, and a full complement of dad jokes. I would like to extend a special thank you to Councilwoman Clear, who graciously agreed to give up being deputy mayor this year, so I could do it before I have to take on a new and exciting role in my life. I hope the world is ready for what could be a smaller, cuter version of me or her. God help us all if it's a hybrid. Amber's doing well, and she is going to be an adorable future mother. Have a great week, everybody.
Thank you. Councilman Mays.
Tough act to follow there. You know, I just wanted to sort of echo your sentiments on National Night Out. I had a great time. We got back in town with enough time for me to, well, I will say, I went to the kickoff party at Hy-Vee, which was fantastic and huge, there were a ton of people there. And then I got to hit about, I think we hit five different neighborhoods, and I got to sample four different types of homemade ice cream. And I am a sucker for that stuff, so I thank all the people who went to great lengths to provide that for me, and look forward to next year.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also had a good time at National Night Out, and if you guys are watching, I'd like to have ice cream at our next National Night Out. That's a great idea. Congratulations, Councilman Jensen. It'll change your life.
Councilman Lesser.
Real quick, I too wanted to thank Mr. Sample. Had a couple of waterline breaks that he jumped on real quickly. One actually was in an assisted living facility, you know, so it was kind of important to make sure that area was protected, the hole and all that good stuff. And then the other thing real quickly is, I had a business client of mine that reached out to me because he had been so impressed with the job that Chief Cochran has done, that he wanted to have a meeting with him to talk about a donation to the police department. And they did, and I know it has, has ended up in a significant contribution to the K9, I believe. So people are watching, and, and there again, that's, that's a pat on the back of the job chief's doing, so that's all I had. Thank you.
Wonderful. Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you. Well, it's been kind of a mind-blowing week with events and so on, and I'm sure I'll forget something. I can't get to all my night outs anymore. There were 11 in District One this year. It's like, woo. And Auburndale has a band, too, so maybe somebody's going to have to kind of get this competition going on. But I'm really proud of all my neighborhoods for, for those activities. In terms of back to school, I'm not having to deal with that at home these days, but I did get down to New Mount Zion's haircut event last week, and, and that was amazing. Now, that's a good-sized church, but it was, there were eight barbers going. It was totally packed with people getting their heads buzzed, going to the various booths that they had set up, and waiting in line. So hats off to New Mount Zion. That was phenomenal. I know there were other kind of people collecting school supplies and having back-to-school events and so on around town, but that was my first time down there. They had pony rides, too. It was, it was great. Also, speaking of Chief Cochran, I got a chance to be at the dedication for the new Sharps collection box in the lobby of the police department. That idea, as everybody knows, they, they started a box, one of the secure boxes for people to dispose of. to dispose of outdated medicine at pretty much the beginning of this year, and that's been really, really successful. And so I was talking to him not long ago and sharing that one of my neighborhood folks was interested in a place to dispose of Sharps, because if they were doing neighborhood cleanups or pre-cleanups and so on, or just had seniors who didn't have the time and energy to get things too far, and people didn't want them in the trash, she was trying to brainstorm a place in the neighborhood that we could have a box, and as we talked about it, it was like, eh, I don't know. And I mentioned it to Chief Cochrane, and he was able to use the drug money, and, I mean, within days, he said, "I've ordered it." And then it came in and was dedicated last week. And overall, I just think it makes the lobby of the police station a one... It enhances the whole idea of safety. It really is, if you think about it, it's a place that you can have a safe exchange now, if you've sold something or bought something online and don't know the person. They've made the lobby available for that. Or if there's a child custody situation where it's, might not work out well to transfer children from one parent to the other, the police department has made the lobby available as a safe location. And so adding the Sharps box just added to that in a way that, to me, really invites people to go for a positive reason. And I really... I think you're still back there, aren't you? Yeah. Great credit to you for that. And speaking of the water main breaks, I too have had just informal feedback from citizens who have just gone out of their way to say to me, "You know, those workers were here all night, but they were so nice." And if I went and asked them what was going on, they were helpful. You know, I don't want to take them away from their work, but they were just getting lots of good feedback about our staff and the good job that they do. That's it.
Councilwoman Clear.
Well, even though National Night Out was on my calendar, I ended up getting sick on Thursday. I was sick through Sunday, so I remember last year, and that was cool, so. Harley Party, chance to win a Harley Davidson motorcycle, Harley Party benefit for Boys and Girls Club is this Saturday. It's out at Forbes Field at some aviation building. I'm a dedicated babysitter, so I don't know. But get your ticket online, Boys and Girls Club. Just want to say happy anniversary to my husband. He's put up, I'm sorry, been married to me for 27 years this week.
That was a positive wisdom.
Oh, okay. We're going behind on the ducks here, folks. We've got 22 out of 50. I invite city staff to buy some ducks, because there's two other agencies that have kind of swam ahead of us, so...
$5.
$5. And it's, if you type in, if you put in "Topeka, Great Topeka Duck Race," it'll take you right to it. Easy to purchase, but we're going behind. Thank you.
Right. There's, is there an executive session? Being no executive session, my friends, 8:13, and we are adjourned.